Good evening, this is Enid Lappelis. Today is December 14th and the time is 8:04. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those town council members and any other participants who are present. So, some people are remote, but we'll start with the DeeDee.
DeeDee present, remote.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar here, remote.
Jason?
Jason Maurer, present.
Harry?
Present.
John?
John, present.
Present, on to John. Tony?
Tony Scott, present.
Sean?
Sean O'Rourke, present.
Kevin?
Kevin Reed.
And Enid Lappelis, present. Let's see, this is a hybrid meeting. This will be conducted as a hybrid meeting as follows. Town council members, designated staff, invited presenters, and members of the press may attend in person or remotely. Public access to this meeting will be limited to joining the meeting as follows. One, a minimum of in-person public attendance will be permitted based upon the reduced capacity of the meeting room pursuant to the governor's executive orders. Any member of the public wishing to attend in person must email meetings@monroct.org at least 24 hours in advance. You'll be notified as to whether or not space is available. Two, all members of the public may attend remotely as follows: via computer, tablet, or smartphone at the Slink H2S blah blah blah, via phone at access code. Please refer to further information provided at the end of this agenda regarding this remote's electronic meeting and the use of GoToMeeting. Written public comments in compliance with the guidance for public participation in remote electronic meetings may be submitted in up to one hour in advance to this meeting with electronic mail to towncouncil@monroct.org. Going on to, I'm amending the agenda. Number D on new business will now be Resolution Regarding Settlement of Tax Appeal, 15 Woods Road. I need a second for this motion. Okay, and discussion, discussion later.
Madam Chair, wouldn't it be number, letter E under new business?
Oh, I think it's B.
I already have a D.
I think it's D. Let me just show you. I have new business A, B, C, and this is now going to be D.
I have, on my agenda, I already have A, B, C, and D under new business. Acceptance of proposed regular meetings.
Okay, okay, so I'll stand corrected. And I'd rather do the reverse. I'm going to make D what I wanted. Resolution Regarding Settlement of Tax Appeal, 15 Woods Road, and then I'll make E, Acceptance of Proposed Regular Meetings. That's not going to require any much comment at all. Thank you, Mr. Maurer, anyway.
Thank you.
So, do we need a vote on this? All in favor of the motion D?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I believe this is a nine to zero vote. Okay, let's see, consent counter. Any objections to me passing the consent counter as presented? Any objections to me presenting the consent counter, the remote people?
No.
Kevin, can you hear us? Can I pass the consent counter?
He said nothing.
Did he say okay?
He said no objection.
Yeah, he's good.
Okay, fine. All right, so I've passed the consent counter. Going on to, next thing is the...
Communications.
Communications. So hereby I ask that communications A through L be referenced in the minutes of the meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to motion to move letter L into action item number F now.
Okay, L to F.
I mean, new business, sorry. Yeah.
And the new business are under action items.
New business.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I have a feeling this will be a withdrawn motion. It would still be a communication as L. That does not mean that it can't be discussed.
Okay.
Or that contents couldn't be discussed as part of that, but the communication should stay within communications as they are specific things that were communicated to the council, and then they can be discussed during the other parts of the agenda by council.
Mr. Maurer, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Maurer, according to Robert's rules, can they be, when would they be discussed?
When you ask would be one of the appropriate times of when it could be discussed if it was part of that subcommittee.
I'm going to make it, I'm going to make it chairman's prerogative. I'm going to leave it as L and discuss it immediately. Go on.
Okay.
That works too.
Okay, that okay? Do I have, need a motion? Do I need, that's okay with everybody? All right, so Mrs. Aguilar, you want to start?
I actually, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually just wanted to have it brought into a forefront just to have it on record that it is in our, it is an email and an attached petition from the Monroe resident, Ms. Rachel Cook of Northway to the Town Council regarding the cell tower, and it has, excuse me, I'm sorry. It has...
Sixty-six signatures.
Sixty-six names, and I just wanted to make sure that it was in our minutes that we acknowledged it.
And the other, I noticed how 17 of the names were from out of town.
Yeah, is that allowed?
That's what I was going to say. Is that allowed to be in a petition? Mr. Leato?
Anybody can petition anything, anywhere.
Okay.
Standing for a petition, so.
Okay.
To the extent it's applicable, I would say that's something.
We could just leave it here. We're not doing anything with this at the moment.
Right.
Correct, Mr.? Mr. Kellogg, is that okay? All right, so I'm going on to, there's no public participation. Does anybody in the audience know? So, Mr. Kellogg, there's no public participation?
I'll check online. Anyone online wishing to speak during public participation? Unmute yourself first.
I'm going to, that'll be, that's been some Marino. So there are no appointments tonight, so for action items, I have Kevin Reed on L and A matters. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we will, all the items that are in new business tonight were, we will be able to address for the ones that we discussed. So when they come up, we will...
There, you can discuss them as resolutions.
They'll be discussed during the new business, so.
Okay. If you could just speak a little louder, thank you. Okay, we have Mr. First Selectman's update, Mr. Kellogg.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, can I just say something about, about, well, I don't even see it on here. Never mind, I take it back.
Okay, Mr. Kellogg, update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, a quick update on the COVID response. Certainly not, no surprise, I'm sure to you that the statewide trends are continuing. Almost the entire state is in that red category. We are now at 569 total confirmed and probable cases. The two case rate of new cases is currently averaging about just over six and a half new cases a day. That, at 31, I'm sorry, 34.1 per 100,000, which is the standard that the, this is to typically normalize the data across all the populations. Sure, everyone here is aware that Superintendent Cobza announced last week that it's starting through December 23rd, which essentially gets them through the holiday break. We did have to pop up testing clinic on December 8th with 430 people there. We are trying to get additional dates and sites in the state. It is a challenge. It's a challenge that we are not alone in facing. There are many of my colleagues that have expressed similar frustrations. Mostly what we're hearing is that it's a function of resources in terms of available testers through the testing companies, but we are continuing to try and get more testing dates in Monroe. There is a site that is available on Tuesday in Trumbull that I announced in my updated community, and we'll continue to do our best to try and get more testing dates here in town. The vaccination planning continues. The Pfizer vaccine was approved, as I'm sure you're all aware. That is going to be administered primarily by hospitals because of the ultra cold temperatures required. They're the only ones that really have that capacity. They are concentrating on healthcare workers, which is really the bulk of the efforts currently. Planning is still in earnest for critical workforce and, you know, which would include teachers and residential residents down the road. There's a lot of, a lot still that, quite frankly, is unknown. Even today, there's some questions on, you know, when we'll get, we get the priority group 1B, what will be the priorities within 1B, and that is still, there's not a lot of specificity yet in that regard. So, we are, we're still working towards that. There was actually a call today amongst the emergency teams of Stratford, Trumbull, and Monroe, which have a longstanding history of working together on public health emergency planning efforts, and we kind of just held a coordination call today to get everyone on the same page and talk about things like regional strike teams that will be stood up so that in the larger areas, we will have teams of people that can go town to town and deal with large groups. Because as you can imagine, if those were all diluted amongst each, you know, it would be very difficult to pull off larger clinics. So, and then, of course, there's still the concept of when vaccine is more widely available. We are assuming that will be available through more traditional, you know, sources, pharmacists and healthcare providers, so. More to come. I wanted to just try to give you at least once a month some updates on economic development and the recovery. So first, I just, I pulled out a few updates that Ray Giovanni, our EDC chair, had shared with me. The commission has been working on a promotion autumn in Monroe, so I think I reported at one point that they were planning on that. That came, began a couple months ago. It'll go through the holidays. Have at least 25 businesses that have provided flyers, menus, you name it, and we have been working to promote that on both the town's EDC pages, and the Chamber of Commerce is also cross-promoting those as well. I've heard a lot of good comments, ad hoc, from businesses that are very appreciative of that additional no cost for them marketing. As part of that initiative, they also put up support in Monroe businesses as lawn signs, and those are placed throughout the community as well. Working with Bill Holdsworth, they've been in very close contact with our businesses in terms of the guidance and kind of the new normal in this mode and the safety protocols. As I think I've shared in the past, Bill Holdsworth is the first person that typically works with businesses to educate them on sector rules and/or will kind of go out and work with them if we're receiving any complaints with the intent of kind of educating and ensuring that we can help the business be successful and hopefully avoid the need for any kind of regulatory or punitive actions that would follow. But we've been pretty successful in that regard, and Monroe has certainly, we have not issued any fines or closed any establishments over COVID issues. The traditional ribbon cuttings have been paused, but we, the commission did speak as recently as their last meeting about trying to find safer, you know, alternatives that will safely work to help promote new businesses until those can resume. And then, some updates from the Committee on Economic Recovery Coordinator on some of the business changes. These are just some changes that I, that I had, you know, updates from the last time I gave you reports. So there's certainly a lot going on, but these are some new things or new changes. I'm sure you're all aware the Noble Gas opened up on the last week of November. That was, I want to acknowledge not just Bill Holdsworth, but the entire team. There's a lot of work that had to be done to get them their certificate of occupancy and get them open before Thanksgiving, which was their goal, and the entire team came together and got it done. That involved team members going out even on the weekends to do inspections for the COs. So, I'm very thankful that the team worked hard to work with that business and get them open and meet their schedule. We also anticipate another business, Grassy Plain Smoke Shop at Tollgate Plaza, to finish everything they need to do and open up this week. There's a few things that are still in construction. Anyone who's gone by the Shell gas station across the Big Y entrance has seen all the work there. It's coming along very well. So that, that is well underway. They have construction there. They also have to bring the water main across the road there as well, so there's going to be some, some work going on there. Crown Pizza on Main Street is still doing some renovations internally there in their building, and they're changing some, I believe, some doors around and just, you know, making it their own. So they're still in construction. And Jenny's Pizza is well into their expansion to the adjoining unit. So that's all good, all good news on that front. And there are some proposals for new businesses that have, they're at the point now where we actually have applications on file with one of the land use boards or commissions. Some of them have been in the process. Some are just, they've been conversations, but we actually have applications now. So just to give you a handful of examples, McDonald's, Monroe Turnpike is going to do some pretty extensive renovations to the exterior, and they're looking to add a second drive-through. Best in Backyards, which is on Main Street, is going to be up the road to the former Wood Market location. Gateway Commons is a application for new mixed use on Main Street on the Trumbull line. Actually, the project actually straddles the line, so there's, that development is in Trumbull and part is in Monroe. On the former, the site that was going to be the Walmart on Victoria Drive, we have an application. I believe it's Wood Wetlands currently. We expect one in planning and zoning that is for a distribution and delivery facility. And we have an application that's been submitted by Connecticut Housing Partners to develop a senior housing, basically an age-restricted senior housing project on Main Street. And that is what I have for the evening.
Mr. Kellogg, I hope the whole council approves. I think you should commend Bill Holdsworth and the EDC. They seem to have lots more activities than we have this seen. So if you give them our...
I will certainly send that, thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's certainly plenty of work to do, which is a good problem to have.
Okay, so there's no unfinished business going on to new business. A, Acceptance of the Following Donations that individually exceeds $1,500. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move that we accept the following donations. $2,000 from iengineering.com Inc. for the food pantry, and $2,020 from an anonymous donor for the food pantry.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Discussion? I don't think it needs much discussion. Anything, Mr. Kellogg?
Collective thanks.
Okay, going on to vote. All in favor of this?
Aye.
So DeeDee?
Aye.
Ben, Kevin, aye. So this passes nine to zero. A B, 20-122, to Conduct an Act Upon a Resolution Regarding Creative Bug LLC Subscription Order Form Agreement. Mr. O'Rourke?
I submit the following resolution, hereby adopted, Resolution Number 20-122, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver half of the Town of Monroe. This is Subscription Order Form Agreement. Terms and Conditions, Website Privacy Policy, Enterprise Users, and any associated documents binding between Creative Bug LLC for the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library Subscription Renewal.
Okay, do I hear a second for this?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So, may I recall this agreement from a year ago? It was a one-year agreement at the time. The library director, Lorna Ryans, is very pleased with the service. Would like to be able to continue offering to our patrons. It's been well received. Have before you a renewal subscription agreement, which is at the same fees, the same fees as our current agreement. Been reviewed by town attorney, who I believe was successfully able to get them to make one change, which is changing the venue of State of Connecticut, and asked that you proceed to authorize this agreement so we can continue offering this service to our library patrons.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, just that this did go through L and A and was passed unanimously, and as the selectman stated, I did have one change that I had requested last year, and I commend our town attorney for preemptively making that change continuous for this year so that this is under Connecticut governing law and forum and venue.
Okay, so let's vote, all in favor of this motion? Jen?
Aye.
DeeDee, voting on Resolution 122?
Aye.
There we go.
Hey, Kevin?
Aye.
Okay, so this resolution passes nine to zero. C, Resolution 20-123, to Consider an Act Upon a Resolution Regarding Statutory Notice of the Repose Discontinuance of Old Webb Road, also known as Old Station House Road. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move that the following resolution be hereby adopted, Resolution Number 20-123, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 13A-49-2, is authorized to provide the owner of each property that bounds Old Webb Road, aka Old Station House Road, parentheses, "the road," closed parentheses, with notice of the date, time, and place of the meeting when it is anticipated that the Town Council shall vote to take a final action on discontinuance of the road by mailing a notice to each such owner's address shown on the last completed grand list of the town by first-class mail postmark not less than 30 days prior to the date of such meeting, and be it further resolved that pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 13A-49-2, the Town Council finds that only one sign shall be required at the intersection of the road and Route 111 to be posted for a notice of the meeting when it is anticipated that the Town Council shall take final action of the discontinuance of the road because the road is not a road used by the general public as public right-of-way. The use of such road has been generally limited to the owners of 1603 Monroe Turnpike, 1615 Monroe Turnpike, 1609 Monroe Turnpike, and the owners of 1603 Monroe Turnpike, 1615 Monroe Turnpike, and 1609 Monroe Turnpike are being sent statutory written notice of the meeting when the Town Council shall take final action on the discontinuance of Old Webb Road, and be it further resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman, is authorized to procure sign in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 13A-49-2, stating the date, time, and place of the meeting when it is anticipated that the Town Council shall take a final action on the discontinuance of the road, and specifically stating, quote, "notice of road discontinuance," end quote, and cause such sign to be posted conspicuously at the intersection of the road and Route 111 at least 30 days prior to the scheduled meeting date.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Do I hear a second for this motion?
Second.
Mr. Maurer, second's it? Question?
For me, Kellogg.
I'm sorry. We'll do the next one, I promise.
The virtual.
Ken, the discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you'll recall, back in October, the council referred the contemplated abandonment under Section 8-24 or discontinuance under the 13A-49 to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its report pursuant to 8-24. Included in your packet is a correspondence from Planning and Zoning Administrator dated November 20th reporting back that the Planning and Zoning Commission did render a favorable referral and recommendation back to council pursuant to 8-24. It will require a normal majority of the Town Council to take final action on this because of that favorable report. In order to proceed to a final vote on this matter, there are certain statutory procedures and notices that are required, which is why the draft resolution was presented to you. So, there's basically two things that we need to do. One is to send by regular postal mail a notice to the abutters of the roadway and to post a sign on the roadway, each with 30 days' notice of that date that you would take final action. Included in the resolution is also to finding that only one sign be required. The statute by default requires that on both ends of the roadway, but given in this situation, a sign at the very end of what is essentially serving as a driveway for these properties would seem to be impractical, and those individuals who would see that sign are already getting the mailed notice. So, since the, that is the reason, the nature of the resolution before you, it essentially, the statute requires the council to pause such notices, so you're authorizing me to basically do that. And with that, we'll take any questions. I know Attorney Marino is on the line as well, who's been handling this matter. I'm sure he'd be happy to address any questions you may have as well.
So any questions for Attorney Marino?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Two items, one for Mr. Selectman. If during your First Selectman update at a subsequent meeting, you can just confirm to the council that all notices were made on time to, for the initially calendared meeting at the end of January, and that, so that we did have the 30-day notice, if you could just confirm that in your Selectman's update after notice was made, that would be great.
So, my, what I had intended is that, assuming we proceed as we're contemplating here, after January 25th meeting, included in your packet would be not only a resolution to render that final decision, but in that packet would be included copies of the notices, certificates of mailing, and a picture of the sign.
Perfect, thank you very much. And then, for Attorney Marino, just one question. I know that in the past, we, there was an attorney for some of the landowners, that would be the affected landowners, who had raised some concerns through the meeting at, with the land use, as well as just in your communications with that attorney. Have there been any additional concerns raised?
So, the attorney for the Wiley's, Attorney McTaggart, and I have been in communication. I've reviewed the submissions that I've submitted to the Town Council to ensure that she has no objection, and she has made some minor requests for modification, which I found to be appropriate, and I incorporated that into the documents that I sent to the First Selectman. So as of this moment in time, I believe that any concerns of Attorney McTaggart have been addressed, and there are no outstanding concerns that she has.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Let's vote on this motion, all in favor? Okay. Aye from DeeDee.
Aye.
Kevin, Jen?
Aye.
Okay, so this motion passes nine to zero. Going on to D, Resolution Regarding Settlement of Tax Appeal, 15 Woods Road. I'm moving to enter into executive session. I'm inviting Town Attorney Mr. Leato and Town Selectman, Mr. Kellogg, to join us. We're going in at... We're going in at eight-thirty-four.
I'm sure you need to, uh...
And Marino, too?
You have to vote and to go into executive session.
All in favor?
Second, second, and I vote.
Okay, second?
Second.
Don For McKellum, uh, discussion? I don't think we need discussion to go into session, so, voting on this? Okay. Jen?
Aye.
DeeDee, aye. So, we're going to executive session on a vote of nine to zero. Thank you. We have nobody to kick out.
Yeah, if we could just give the, uh, First Selectman opportunity to lock the meeting and to inform, I guess, the callers that they'll have an opportunity to sign back in.
Yeah, so, uh, at this time, uh, I would ask that any of the participants that are on this meeting, uh, that are not council members, uh, please disconnect. I will let you know that if you disconnect and you dial or go back to the link, uh, in five minutes, while we will likely still be in executive session, you will be placed in queue. And once we go back to full, uh, open session, you will be reconnected at that time. But at this time, I would ask that you disconnect.
This is all...
Okay, that's DeeDee twice.
Have the call to get in? Who can I go in?
Jen, Kevin? DeeDee, are you in twice?
Looks like. Looks like I am, but I don't know how I possibly got in twice.
Tell me you were going to try that today, DeeDee.
Can you X that one out?
Of course, we just...
DeeDee, are, are you, uh, remote? Are you viewing, are you viewing the, uh, on like a iPad or something else at the same time?
Uh, I have it up on the computer at the same time.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, that's what it is. Okay, so we're good.
Do we need to stop the recording?
This conference will now be recorded.
Who has the motion, Frank?
Uh, I don't, I think Enid has the motion.
I have it here. Oh, he has, okay.
I sent them all, everyone on council, but.
Yeah, I didn't.
They all have it.
Didn't check my email this afternoon, unfortunately, before I came here. See? Come on, me.
Never know what surprises are gonna happen.
I know, I gotta.
We've got a couple.
Remember that.
If nobody has it.
Yeah, Sean has it, Sean has it. Just the resolution.
Okay, so, we came out of executive session at eight forty-three, and we're going to, uh, discuss Resolution Twenty-Dash-One-Twenty-Four. So, Mr. O'Rourke?
I move that the following resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution Number Twenty-Dash-One-Two-Four, resolved at the first selectman, and Town Attorney are authorized to settle the action regarding the tax appeal for property at fifteen Woods Road.
Second?
Second.
Mr. For McKellum, um, discussion? Mr. Kellogg, I think we've done this, but any more comments by you?
Just during executive session, so you're...
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we're voting on this resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, DeeDee?
Aye.
Aye.
And Kevin?
Aye.
So, this goes through nine to zero. Our last is, happens to propose regular meeting dates. So, Mr. O'Rourke?
Let's see, have that one somewhere?
No, I just want to make a motion to.
Make a motion to accept, uh, Town Council meeting schedule for, uh, year twenty-twenty-one.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
For Kama For McKellum, uh, discussion? I did the dates with Katz Sanco, so I made sure that I double-checked them. Any other discussion? All in favor of this?
Aye.
DeeDee? Jen?
Aye.
So, this passes nine to zero. Any other public participation?
Anyone on, other than the, uh, council clerk, but... I will ask if anyone has anything to say in public. You should please remember to unmute yourself and, uh, indicate your desire to speak.
So, we're adjourning this meeting at, uh, eight forty-six P.M. Thank you, have a good holiday, Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah, Enid. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Enjoy everyone.
Everybody.
Good days.
Please stay.
See you, buddy.
I see you, Frank.
See you all.